Good morning, members. It's now time to get started and we have a quorum here. Alright, we'll start the meeting. Yesterday, the panel decided that first of all, today we deal with the motions moved by Mr. Albert Chan and Raymond Chan. I have to remind members that the... we decided to deal with the motions today, but the main task of our meeting today is to listen to deputations, views on NENT NDA project. We have lots of deputations and individuals with us today, subject to members' agreement. I decide what we will do. Yesterday, it was decided that we will vote on the motion. Now, first of all, I'd like to listen to members' views. We haven't voted on the motion yet. Is it right that some members would like to speak on the motion? The bell was rung yesterday. It means we're in the voting stage. So, according to the convention, what's subject to Chairman's agreement, we should continue with what we left off yesterday. That means we'll go to the voting stage. But we did not have enough time yesterday. We can't really vote, even though the bell was rung. A member asked to ring the bell, but the clerk noted that there was not sufficient time to get into the voting stage, so it was decided we wouldn't vote yet. If members would like to speak on the motion, we really have to press ahead with time, and time has been allocated for member to speak. Now, give one minute to each member. One minute. There are two motions. And I understand members would like to speak on them. Alright, shall we set another date to talk on the motions? Can you extend the time to two minutes? One minute is too short. Any objection? One minute is not right. Albert Chan. I think the two motions are different in nature as opposed to the proposal. How many members want to speak? Raise your hands, please. Claudia Mo An Chang, Liu Wei Kwok, Emily Lau, Cheng Chu, Fernando Cheng, Kenneth Leng, Albert Chan, James To, K K Fong, Lan Kwok Hong, Kenneth Chen, Ip Kwok Him, Chan Kim Po, Regina Ip. Fourteen members. Two minutes each for fourteen members. That alone will exceed the time limit for the two motions. This is a special meeting and our main task is to listen to members of the public. We have... they are already waiting to speak. If members ask for so much time, two minutes, that will be a problem. Even if one minute is allocated to each member, that will be too long. Emily Lau, you have spoken the crux of the matter. So many people are waiting outside. We said yesterday that we should vote on the motions and just now you said you asked whether anyone would like to speak. So which... what do you propose? If you say we should vote, then let's go down to that. We have already prepared ourselves so that... Neither proposal... either proposal is not appropriate. It's not satisfactory. So why don't we vote on the motions and invite the deputations in? As I explained, if we set the line at the time when the bell rang, then the voting time already closed. Why don't you ring the bell now and then we can only spend a... we can spend fifty minutes on the motions? Alright, one minute, one minute. One minute each. Claudia Mo, Claudia Mo. One minute for me. Um, afraid Paul Chan is... has now been declared dead politically by the public. He should step down immediately. At first, there was a saying that or people thought that we could leave him alone, but I think last year, on tenth January, he told Ming Pao, shouldn't Paul Chan be here with us? He told Ming Pao that he would be very cautious about conflict of interest. He said conflict of interest has to be declared very clearly. And he said that he should be whited and white, but now people think it's just too murky. He's just too murky. You ask people outside, most of them will tell you he should resign. Shouldn't the secretary be here because the two motions are about him? Alright, please invite the officials in. I think he has heard us. An Chang. Chairman, I oppose the motions on the following grounds. The DOJ and the ICAC have started investigation process. If we pass the motion, people will think we already make a ruling before listening to parties. If we make a decision based on the news reports and the views of the public, then the rule of law will disappear. It means the rules of law disappears. It will affect the spirit of rule of law in Hong Kong, so I oppose the demotion. Dr. Lau. Chairman, Mr. Leng's motion has one problem, at least. But which one should I speak on first? Alright, I'm on Albert Chan's motion. Lan Kwok Hong, Lan Kwok Hong, please be seated. Lan Kwok Hong. Lan Kwok Hong, please leave. Mr. Leng, please leave the conference room immediately. Speakers of mic. Dr. Lau, one minute. Thank you, Chairman. Now, motions submitted by Mr. Albert Chan and Chan Wai Chuen, I have to volunteer to say. On the twenty-second of July, the two members submitted a motion already and yesterday they submitted another motion. I want to compare the wordings used. I think they are really about the same goal. They may use different wordings, but on the whole of it, they are talking about matters arising from farmland in Kowloon, in Kowloon. A ruling was made on the twenty-second of July. Chairman Wang... Liu Wang Fa said that the motion on that day should not be discussed in the panel. While I respect Deputy Chairman's decision, but I think we should seek legal advice. Ms. Emily Lau. Chairman, I very much support the motion that asked Mr. Paul Chan to step down immediately. I hope Mr. Chan and his family understand that this matter has caused great controversy in our society. Now, some people in this panel support you, but many members of the public think the matter is really unacceptable and on that basis, policies can't really be implemented. Members of the public who were with us at the previous meeting and yesterday focused on the scandal the secretary is embroiled in. So how come you try to carry on? You still try to carry on. How can you launch policies for the administration? You are a negative asset on the administration. Please step down immediately. Fernando Cheng. I think resignation is really the consequence here. Is what a consequence we can foresee. Now, from the chart here from Economic Journal, we see there are so many companies where the secretary disclosed all the relationship concerning these companies. We asked him yesterday and he did not give us a reply. We have to ask questions one after another. So why don't we have a clear-cut decision here? The secretary said that the public impression has to be taken into account. And I think in the public's eyes, you are already in a rock-bottom position. So please step down immediately so that policies rolled out by the Development Bureau can be launched. The CE six-eight-nine. We call him that. And the secretary, I think we should call you nineteen because you stand to gain nineteen folds. Eighty-eight percent of people polled asked you to step down. That's according to a survey done by a television station. You yourself store government's policy. If you're so shameless, you refuse to step down. When we resume in September, we still deal with policies by Development Bureau and by then, the policies can't be launched, can't... will not be agreed by this council. We will start a total war with you, a corrupt official. So I think the officers in Development Bureau should ask to be transferred to other departments or bureaus. Alright, time's up for you. Next. Mr. Chan. Uh, Mr. James To. On Mr. Albert Chan's motion, I have to consider whether Mr. Paul Chan's continuation as a secretary will affect the policies to be launched by his bureau, whether he staying in the office will affect NENT project. I think so. I don't think he's a bad person, but if he stays in his post, he cannot rally confidence from the public and policies can't be taken forward as a result. So he should leave the post. Please consider my point seriously. Next, Mr. K K Fong. There's no other option for the secretary. If he's too relaxed in the future, people will think he's passing advantages and he... if he's too stringent, people will think he's trying to clear his records. So either way, people will think you are in the wrong. At the... at the beginning, there were options for you, but now you only have one. Step down, please. Mr. Kenneth Chen. Good morning, Paul Chan. Goodbye, Paul Chan. I'm also an alumni of CUHK. I think you were shameless yesterday. Yesterday, you said you would not resign. After we... Well, but then some people didn't even know the ABC of Lajko. We are here to monitor the administration, the officials. ICAC doesn't come into the picture. If we think you are not right for the post, we ask you to step down. Alright, please step down. Ms. Ip Kwok Him. I said at the... at an earlier meeting, I asked whether the motion is within the terms of reference of this panel. Mr. Liu... Mr. The Chairman already made a ruling. Now, concerning this present motion, the wordings are different. And I think the motion is related to the panel. The details are related to the panel. But asking Paul Chan to resign, which is about the integrity issue, should be discussed on other occasions, as Mr. Lau said. I think the resignation matter is beyond the terms of reference of this panel, but I respect your decision, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chan Kim Po, so far, we don't have any evidence showing that Mr. Chan... Paul Chan will be unfair in dealing with the NENT NDA project. If this is the basis on asking him to resign, I think many members here should resign. Now, members of the media follow the secretary and the... his family members. This is causing them great disturbances. What was the crime of his children? How come they have to be subject to such behavior... such treatment? I asked the media to apologize immediately and stop following him and his families and I condemn them. Mrs. Regina Ip... Mrs. Ip. Chairman. Two points. First, I agree with Dr. Lau and Mr. Ip Kwok Him in terms of the procedure. Mr. Liu Wang Fa, after seeking legal advice, said that resignation of officials should not be discussed in this panel. Now, the legal advice was sought. We haven't read it, however. So first point, are there any rules saying that we have the right to do so? And secondly, Paul Chan and his family members try very... try very... try his best to explain the matters concerning NENT. We should give him a chance and he and his families have already been subjected to many disturbances by the media. We should give him a second chance. Mr. Chan. Stop the loss, secretary. Stop the loss for the government.
You should cut losses. You're now making more and more errors. Set aside your popularity or your... I'm also a alumni of New Asia and Anthony Leng had stepped down and he's still able to retain his reputation. I think you should do the same. And you should also do something good for Hong Kong public. On Sunday afternoon in inclement weather, you shouldn't have old and young out in the streets. You should step down and I would like other members' support. Sid Ho. Paul Chan. He quoted from New Asia motto, but he left out a verse that is he should let go of his personal pursuit. And Mr. Paul Chan, if you were working on land planning, but if you have so much real estate speculation, land interest, the motion says very clearly that you have not been able to fairly and equitably deal with northeast development and you cannot give the public the impression that you're dealing with it fairly. It's not just eighteen thousand square feet land interest. It's a credibility issue. Hong Kong people should have a trustworthy government. We... it's... the situation is not salvageable now. So Chairman, I will support Mr. Chan Wai Yi and Mr. Chan Ji Xun. Mr. Michael Tian. Regarding whether Mr. Paul Chan should continue, I have three concerns. Did he have any personal gain? And in his family's land, the land will be resumed? Or we can see that the interest will be less? And in the future arrangements, if he continues, if his family still hold on to that land, if there's any change, the public will say his family will be benefiting. So it seems that his family will have to sell all their interests. And third, on credibility, I'm most concerned about the subdivided flats and he claimed that he didn't have any interest, but now his wife indicates that his wife has some seventy percent interest and I can't follow this chart. There are different arrows pointing. So does he have the seventy percent interest? Well, legislators cannot fire government officials, but as a government official, you should ask who you're accountable to. When you were a legislator, you were a very reasonable person, but as a secretary, I think he's forgotten all the core values. When you received... accepted this appointment, you should be aware that you were... had to promote northeast development and you should be aware that your family has twenty thousand square feet of land in that area. At the time, why didn't you clarify? You were in your family's interests. Why didn't you immediately, at that time, sell it? And why one year later, we are squeezing the truth out of you? So are you accountable to yourself? We can't fire you, but I would like to urge you, if you want to retain your image or reputation, you should resign. Mr. Paul Chan, would you like to respond? Chairman, you're a professional and Mr. Paul Chan is a professional. I'm a professional. We appreciate professional ethics. Mr. Chan, I've given you more than one or two chances. Can you clarify your shareholdings in the companies? I'm talking about the person, not the body corporate. We have these offshore companies that were established and who are the shareholding persons? You should not pull wool over eyes with this corporate veil. You've been fooling us around for a long time. So I'm at wood's end. My motion, I have to yield to Mr. Chan Wai Yi. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak? If not, secretary, would you like to respond? Yes, I'd like to respond. First of all, I've been questioned whether they... I've been... whether the truth has been squeezed out of me bit by bit. Well, before attending, I had already explained to the media and then I had to go on a business... on a trip to Tianjin and then I returned on Wednesday afternoon. My wife and I had issued statements regarding the different concerns and yesterday, my wife also issued another statement to further clarify the position because it takes time to find the information. It's not my interests. It's my in-laws' interests and I need time to discuss with them. Yes. My in-laws and my wife, through Statement Industries, had purchased a piece of land in Kudung in nineteen ninety-four and when I was aware of that in September, I had reported that to the chief executive and had also discussed with my wife. She had taken the initiative to sell the shareholdings and on tenth of October, it was sold to her brother, her younger brother. And previously, people had questioned whether that was a real transaction and when my wife issued the statement, the shareholding transfer documents had been disclosed. You'll see the contents. So it's not a trust. It is an actual transaction and the price is also a market price. Mr. Michael Tian also raised a separate question. What I'll do in the future? Well, in Statement Industries, the day before yesterday, they issued a statement regarding the concern arising from this incident. They are also uncomfortable, so they had expressed and they said in a statement, they had recruited professional surveyors to assess the value of that farmland. After assessment, there will be an open tender to sell that land at a market price. As Mr. Michael Tian said, my wife's in-law... my in-laws will not be... will not have any interest to northeast new territories. There will be no more questions. Mr. Michael Tian also referred to the company, Orient Express. Yes, there is a shareholding and it's a seventy-five percent shareholding. My wife last night also made a statement. The seventy-five percent, half is Orient Express Holdings, another half is held on behalf of a company called Classic Success. So this company, Classic Success, whether it is my wife or my children or my own or Orient Express, we don't hold any shares. There's no interest. Since it is an offshore company, you can't see its shareholders. So my wife had discussed with Classic Success and they had agreed to recruit a law firm to audit the company's documents to prove that my wife and I and my children don't have any shareholdings in this company. So Orient Express, the holdings in Orient Express are only thirty-seven point five percent. So this is the same as Statement Industries. I had previously said in Lajko that my wife's holdings are not of a controlling level. That is in line with what I said. Mr. Liu Kai Ching mentioned different companies and we have already disclosed to our best. Thank you, secretary. Mr. Chan Wai Yi and Mr. Chan Ji Xun's motion will be put to the vote and it is not legally binding. Mr. Ronny Tong. Mr. Ronny Tong. Regina Ip. And, uh, Mr. Lau Wong Fat, chairman, had made a ruling, how do we deal with that? Miss Ip. I had made a ruling yesterday. It is relevant, so we'll now discuss this. Mr. Ronny Tong. I'm not a member, so I can't vote. I'd like to state clearly, uh, the public in the public area, they might, uh, wonder. Only panel members can vote. We'll now put it to the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Please call up the names. Mr. Emily Lau, Sid Ho, Cheung Chi Wu, Fernando Chung, Leng Kai Chung, Albert Chan, Chan Ji Chuen, Claudia Mo, Fan Gao Wei, Feng Kim Ge, James To, Chan Galak. Those against, please raise your hands. We have Zhang Lai Wan against Michael Tian, Abraham Scheck, Regina Ip, Luo Wei Gao, Chan Kim Bo, Ip Gao Yin. Any abstentions? We have ten members for and seven against. So the motion is endorsed. Next, because of time constraints, we have a motion by Leng Kai Chung. Anybody wishes, who wishes to speak? We have a lot of people waiting, and time is constrained, so I propose that. We... Anyone want to speak? We do have, we don't have enough time for, not even one minute. We've already overrun. Somebody wants to speak? We can put it, we can deal with it at three fifty-five? I can extend by fifteen minutes. We'll now invite delegations. The secretary reminded there were eleven four, not ten. The meeting will be held till four P M. And I said we would extend to four fifteen. And at one oh five to two, we'll break for lunch. Today, we have forty-five deputations and fifty-seven individuals attending. The meeting will be divided into three parts, uh, two hours each part. Between one oh five and two, as I said just now, will be lunch. And in each session, we'll allow deputations to speak. The individuals or deputations will have three minutes after speaking. I'll let legislators ask questions, and then the government officials can respond briefly. Any objections to this arrangement? First of all, we welcome the deputations, individuals, government officials. We have a attendance list, so I won't, uh, spend more time on that. So, deputations and individuals, you will have three minutes speaking time. And the submissions and verbal submissions will not be covered by Legislative Council Power and Privileges, cap three eight two. Uh, you won't receive these exemptions, so when you speak, you, uh, will be responsible for the outcome or your speech. So first of all, first speaker. Ms. Gabby Mack, good morning. I am the convener of against six eight nine. And I have a simple message. I, what's the difference between a member of the public and an official? A member of the public cannot do without a job. He has to be responsible for his livelihood. If he makes a mistake, he'll say, I don't know, when the boss asks. If he says, I can't remember, I think we all know, this person will be fired. But, uh, senior official, Mr. Paul Chan goes to work nine to five when he makes a mistake. When he makes an error, he can proclaim loudly, tell the public, I don't know, I can't remember, or I have no memory. I'd like to remind you, we are talking about NENT Northeast. Please use your three minutes' time and focus on that bit.
Well, our secretary is like this. And he is so shameless, he's still sitting here to listen to the views on NENT project. Well, our secretary and our Mr. Six Eight Nine are challenging, uh, how tolerable we are towards the NENT project. Um, some groups have proposed a win-win solution, um, i.e. proposing for the, uh, demolition of the Fanning Golf Course to build housing and to build, um, facilities. I think this is a win-win situation, and can, we can do away with the proposal of wiping out people's villages. I think that's, should, uh, be worth our consideration. But regrettably, the secretary said that this is something, um, not feasible, and we don't have time to go down that route. We don't get it, why is that the case? Now, we know, we understand these two days because the secretary owns land in Kootong. And for a secretary like that, how can we have faith in him that he would, uh, take care of the needs of the residents in NENT? So we are all against this NENT project. Secretary, I want to tell you, please step down. The secretary might have other plans of how to maximize his gains. Perhaps he has many other plots in other areas and many other proposals in begging money. If that is the case, I think he should step down, and he should not, uh, stick on or stay on in his position. Well, time's up, sorry, the next one. Mr. Hao Kam Lam, North District Council Member, good morning, members, president. I'm a vice chairman of the North District Council, and, and I'm also an elected district council member of Kootong North constituency. I think the government should share, um, the, the fruits of success in that, uh, area. Now, under the current proposal, it is aimed at addressing the housing needs in Hong Kong, this is a good thing. But then, that is being done at the expense of, um, harming the public interest and the wiping out the villages in Kootong. Now, if a project has to be successful, it should take care of the interests of all the stakeholders, including those who are going to be cleared, the landowners, and those who are going to move into the area, especially the first batch of people to be hit, Kootong villages. If they don't get a reasonable, uh, compensation, then the residents will be fighting very hard against you. In many development projects in the past, there have been a lot of conflicts, of villagers, uh, taking, uh, fighting against the government. But the government has been, um, taking special measures to take care of the needs of the, um, villages. Now, the government should go down along that track in this latest proposal too. Now, under the NTNE proposal, we don't, that there, see, that there is a site to be redeveloped for the villages. And in the many, um, consultations exercised, the villagers have been asking for in-stitu, um, rehousing. Now, the Kootong village is a recognized statutory village under the registration, uh, book of Hang Yook. And the village representative is represented on a one-man, one-vote basis. We've been here for many years, and we're mainly the Chu Chau people and the Hakka people in the twenties and thirties. Um, the Kootong villagers have, uh, worked very hard to build their homes. And they, um, have worked hard on their farmland, reared, uh, livestock, and so on. And they, uh, uh, provide and support for their family through their own hard work. And they have a very harmonious community there. And they, perhaps, they, the, the parents will ask their neighbors to take care of their children, and they share their meals and so on. So we, they cherish this kind of rural way of living. And for three to four generations, they have lived in that village, and they have, uh, deep feelings for that village. And their ancestors have contributed much to Hong Kong. So now, we are asking them to sacrifice for the interest of Hong Kong as a whole. So why can't the government rebuild the Kootong Village Institute? I don't think this is fair to Kootong villages. Let me start an example, sorry, uh, your time's up. Next one, Mr. Lau Kwop Fan. Thank you, Chairman. In the eighties, I lived in subdivided units in, uh, Kaolun, and then I moved later on to Fanning. I support the development of NENT. And if not for the, uh, earlier development of, uh, the Northern District, I would not, uh, have the opportunity to live in the Northern District, to live there, to study there, and had a very happy childhood there. Now, uh, some two hundred thousand people are waiting for, uh, public housing, and, uh, seven hundred and seventy thousand people are living in subdivided units, uh, waiting to be rehoused. So we hope that we can provide housing to these groups of people. So I hope that this plan can, uh, be taken forward as soon as possible. But then, for the implementation details on rehousing the villages and on compensation packages, then if, if the government is not doing a good job, then it will just drag on and will meet with a lot of difficulties. So in every consultation session, I, um, I was there to speak up. Uh, the plan was conceived in the nineties, and I attended each and every consultation session. And I have heard many people say that the latest proposal cannot take care of the needs of the people. Say you've, you are giving out an excruciating payment of six hundred thousand dollars, but this amount is grossly inadequate for, for them to find another place to live. What about rehousing and putting them on, uh, public, uh, housing units? Um, a, a lot of people living in squatter hearts, and they would find it difficult to live in, uh, public housing units. And some villagers would like to live in, uh, bungalows, say. Now, if the, they are compensated according to the plan for Choyin Estate, uh, Choyin Chin, then they would, should have a, an option of living in, uh, bungalows. Um, I also expressed this to the district council. Um, I think a lot of people do support building housing in the area. But then for facilities like a police driving school, uh, some other locations can be found for that, those kind of facilities. And some Pingshan village residents told me that in developing Chulai Garden, um, for, uh, building the North District, uh, pla, uh, playground or sports ground, uh, half of the village, uh, it was, uh, uh, resumed. And they hope that the other half could be, uh, resumed this time too. So I think the plan has been here for too long, and I think it should be taken forward as soon as possible. Time's up. Mr. George Peng.
From the HKIE, Hong Kong Institute of Engineers. Uh, the HKIE actually supports the endeavor of the administration in matching and identifying suitable areas for new town development for meeting midterm and long-term housing needs. We agree to the concept and key aims of the Northeast New Territory New Development Areas Development Proposal. HKIE suggests the administration to comprehensively review the various upcoming infrastructure development and essential projects initiatives so that the overall planning of the new developments in new territories would be sustainable and well-coordinated, while ensuring that these essential projects could be put forth and implemented in a balanced and steady pace in the long run. We note that the development aim for a population of four hundred and sixty thousand upon full development. Apart from planning and constructing sufficient social and community facilities to facilitate a desirable living condition there, we urge the administration to place no less focus on the future residential's, residence needs for employment, which would be essential for every new town development. The administration also recommended to seriously study and address the issue in two aspects, i.e. within district employment and cross-district connectivity. The administration should strive for achieving self-sufficiency and job people match within the development as much as practicable. It is suggested to review and rationalize the industrial and commercial developments within and surrounding the development so as to maximize job creation to provide more employment opportunities for the residents, saving them traveling time and cost as well as soothing the burden to the transportation network. We see the necessity of optimizing the external connectivity of the development to meet the transportation demand, especially for work and business purposes. The administration, uh, should put forward detailed study of the construction of the North Northern Link Railway between the West Rail Line and the East Rail Line and other railway, and other highway networks. We also consider it essential to identify environmental-friendly initiative, uh, infrastructure at the commencement of the project. Uh, to secure full support from the stakeholder, we suggest the administration set up stakeholder liaison groups and expert review groups to establish communication amongst the project proponents and relevant stakeholders, such as, uh, the affected residents, local communities, green groups, social service organization, academia, and professional bodies, to serve as advisory platform for the stakeholders to give advice on the design, construction, and future administration of the development. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Lau Heng Shan, next. I think the S A L government is shameless, and they are putting themselves against the interest of the, uh, Hong Kong people. Um, the farmland has been taken away, the villages are being wiped out. We do have land, we have the Fanning, Fanning Golf Course, and, uh, the race course is, are still being kept, and the public interest has, has been sacrificed. So I think the, um, Mr. Six Eight Nine and Paul Chan have to step down immediately. Now, the, I'm going to read out something, uh, particularly for Mr. Paul Chan. Please take note of what I say. Yes, uh, sorry, please. Please, uh, focus, uh, on talking about NENT project in your three minutes. In NENT, and he owns a land, and he is used to lying, and he's gaining all sorts of favor. and he's gaining all sorts of favor from selling land. Well, he can actually resume Fanling Course to build housing and he's gaining thousands of dollars through selling his own land there. And Mr., sorry, well, I would like to remind you, the delegations, the deputations and individuals to focus on your opinions on N E N T project. Paul Chan, he is one who is hoarding land in Kootong. Paul Chan, Paul Chan, you are used to lying and you are selling your land to gain a lot of money. And it's too late that we find this out when actually the Fanling Golf Course can be resumed for building housing and he's pocketed millions of dollars through selling land. And he's also let off in drink driving in the past and he will be gone down in history as a sinner in the future. Well, please don't clap when you, those are sitting in at the meeting. Next one, Dr. Alan Lang.
Thank you, Chairman. Today, I want to talk about environmental issues. In the N E N T project, the E I A report has not been passed yet. Under the E I A mechanism, the first step is for the administration to find out the sensitive receivers. Using the layman's terms, i.e. what kind of species would be affected by the development? Or what kind of groups would be affected by the development? If these groups cannot be identified, these conclusions will be dubious or raise doubts. I want to point this out, in the E I A report for the N E N T, there is this rare species, kind of fish, rare species of food, fish which is not recorded in the E I A. It is living in, along the wetland, along the M Tong River. And actually, A F C D also confirmed that this is called rosebitting and is a very rare kind of fish in Hong Kong, but the E I A report is not mentioned. So, after this article reported in the media and then there is another media report and then the government do the E I A again and then it will just remove or relocate the rosebitting, the fish, to another location. I think the government should adopt the right approach to E I A. And I hope that the administration can do the E I A again to identify the location of this rare species and to treat it in a scientific manner. Now, based on E I A principles, the first step is to mitigate interference, mitigate the impact on this rare species. We should not just relocate these species, that's not the right way to go. And I hope that the administration and especially the technocrats can abide by the principle of E I A that I mentioned. Well, actually, the E I A has been open to challenge by many people recently and I don't want the E I A to be done for N E N T will be challenged by people and they can do it in a scientific and reasonable manner. Apart from this fish species, there are other areas with ecological value which are going to be adversely affected. So, before the E I A report is endorsed, I hope the administration can respond to these inadequacies found in the E I A process. Thank you. The next one, Mr. Thomas Chee.
President, good morning. In less than a hundred years' time, Hong Kong has developed from a fishing village into a cosmopolitan city. We are used to facing big changes which are inevitable. But I think we should move ahead and we should create a good future for Hong Kong. And we should not just be taking care of the needs of people. We should also create opportunities for people to move up the social ladder and to improve their lives. So, in the interest of Hong Kong's economic development, I think it's good that the government make early planning. I think the government is in urgent need of finding new land plots to address housing needs and to satisfy economic development needs. Now, according to the government estimates, in the next thirty years, there will be an added population of one point four million. Now, developing new towns can help provide housing for people and ease the housing shortage. And if people are moved to new towns, in the urban areas can be freed up for improving the environment and for new kinds of facilities. Now, in Hong Shui Kiu and N E N T, planning there can help Hong Kong progress in ten years' time. And actually, there aren't many larger tracts of land which can be developed in Hong Kong. So, N E N T is important, the development is very important. So, the Hong Kong Construction Association is supporting the development of N E N T. Now, geographically, Fanling is connected to Shangsheng adjacent to it and Kootong North is near the Fanlan Highway. And compared to other undeveloped areas in N T, the Kootong North has good geographical advantage. So, the Construction Association supports developing Fanling North and Kootong North. Now, in Northern N T, it has been developed for over a decade and the revised proposal has taken care and responded to the demands of various stakeholders. And the government has also made planning for transport facilities, sewage, air ventilation, sustainable development and so on. So, it's proved that technically the development there is feasible. It involves a hundred and twenty billion dollars investment and four point one million in infrastructure and so on. And all these investments can create opportunities for jobs and it brings a lot of benefits to Hong Kong's economic development in the future. So, the association hopes that you would support this program. The next one, Mr. Tam Kwok San.
Thank you very much. Secretary, this one is for you. Don't be too greedy, hoarding land and for making money. You are go to the extent of denying or denouncing your son. And the next one is for your boss, Mr. Six Hundred Eighty Nine. You are going to go down in history as a big sinner. And you are, well, birds of feather flock together, you two. So, among the very complicated company structure of yours, of your companies, is Mr. Six Hundred Eighty Nine a shareholder in your companies? You have made mistake after mistake in new town development. The first mistake is made in Tsuen Moon, the next one is in Tsuen Shui Wan, Tsuen Shui Wei. The paper who pointed out your mistake is a newspaper called Tai Kong Pow. It has all along been supported you in a newspaper on the second of October, twenty twelve. It pointed out that the Tsuen Moon and Tsuen Shui Wei are big mistakes. To succeed in new town development, you have to be working on these three aspects: jobs, transport facilities and balancing public-private housing. Now, people have raised many criticisms against the plan, but have you responded to the demands in your latest proposal? You have zero commitment on providing jobs. And your revised proposal is hollow in content, you don't have any figures at all. Providing jobs to public housing residents, no commitment at all in the document. And actually, the most people moved into these new towns are young people, are low income earners. But what kind of industries are they suited to? I don't see any of it mentioned in your document.
Transportation, we asked you to build a new road, you refused to do that. We asked for a tunnel, you refused that as well. You said there will be more connecting roads. It means more traffic will be diverted to the main trucks in a short period of time. You will only make the congestion worse. How can you say this is professional planning? Housing mix. Hong Kong property for Hong Kong people, there's no undertaking. Now, there will be sixty percent of public housing because there's sinai discovered in Kootong. So, poor people are put there to live, put to live in there. Next. We found it regrettable after reading the revised R O D P. The consultation is meaningless. Local residents' views are not positively responded to and there's no balanced development. I have the following points for members. The development plan disregard local residents, especially the people who have been living there for forty years. There will be new town, there's no change in the planning. The reasonable demands of local villagers are not taken into account. The farmland, the indigenous villagers are all wiped out. Indigenous villagers would like to stick to the current mode of living, but their wishes are not answered. Farmland is, farming is important to Hong Kong, but over one hundred hectare of farmland will be destroyed by the development and farming will shrink further in Hong Kong. Two proposed N D As are taken out, but still the developers will speed up in resuming land. At the end of the day, the farmland will still be resumed. The government only sets its eyes on development. Green woodlands and villages are destroyed. On the other hand, the government is holding residential land and land for clubs for development, yet they do not take that into regard. Now, certain plots should be resumed for development. They should not be afraid of the developers who might take them to court. There should be urban and rural integration in new town development. It means that new towns and bungalows should coexist. Ma Shipo Village, Kootong Village, they are affected. There should be different packages for them. I think there should be institute location for the villagers. Moreover, the one hundred hectare of farmland should be preserved. I urge members to call on the government to continue with the consultation and when necessary, implement amendments and to break down the compensation so that the needs of the residents will be addressed. Now, many people living in N E N T, they already have their homes and their lands, but now because of the plan, their homes are destroyed. Next, Mr. Liu Cheng Hong.
Yunlong District Council member, also a group, concerned group of a small, limited living environment. I want to show you a photo, I visited this family. You see the people here in the photo, they have a broad smile. It's like they are advertising something, they are not living in luxury housing. They are living interim housing and subdivided flat. It's not that they enjoy good living environment. I have a way to make them smile. I asked them to think about, to imagine what will happen if they get a flat and you know that their biggest hope is to get a flat. They know they have to wait three years or longer before they get a flat. In Hong Kong, hundreds of thousands of people are living in subdivided flats and so many households are waiting to be allocated to public housing unit. And two, twenty thousand households are living in crowded public housing unit and there is no arrangement to improve their living standard. N E N T project is to improve living environment of our people. So, I support N E N T development and for the government to identify land for development and to improve the living environment. To bring a smile to these people, you have to consider the housing mix of N E N T. Sixty percent public housing, forty percent private housing. What about the area for the public housing unit? We need more four P units and we need more medium and large size flats to accommodate these people as well as the elderly people. And you should implement Hong Kong property for Hong Kong people. You should not simply leave everything to market force. I urge you to set certain amount of land for Hong Kong property for Hong Kong people and there should be a limit to the size of the flat. There will be a new job opportunities of thirty seven thousand and that's not sufficient. You should have diversified industry in the area. There should be modernized organic farming. There should be public market so that small operators can have that business and there will not be a monopoly of big businesses. Transport, the new towns rely on mass public transport and railway. You should make reference with Tsuen Moon and provide proper feeder service to bring down the transport costs. And I hope the project will be, will roll out smoothly. Next, Mr. Kwan Po Wang.
I want to tell the administration that I oppose N E N T N D A project and I urge Paul Chan to step down immediately. N E N T project destroys the homes of local residents. You destroy the lifestyle of the people there. It's like forcefully removing people like the days in Stalin. People who destroy the homes of local residents put forward very grand reasons, but the sacrifice should be reasonable. Paul Chan, why don't you destroy your home so people can live on the plot? Please pause there. Members in the public gallery and deputations, individuals, please keep quiet to facilitate our meeting. I'm just talking about something basic, humanities. You don't sacrifice people who don't want to make sacrifices. You now destroy people's homes forcefully. And I want to say something in Mandarin, but well, my Putonghua is not good, so I'll speak in Cantonese. The principal officials should not be yes men and make so many promises. You should maintain your dignity. Well, I have an accent, so I'll switch to Putonghua. Bye.
You senior officials should not say yes to everything. The senior officials, you should live with some integrity, that's my speech.
All right, I'll leave now, thank you. Next, please. Mr. Liu Kin Man. Good morning, Chairman and Secretary. First of all, I want to say on the whole, I support the project. For the remaining of our village, I don't think it should be resumed. There has been three rounds of consultation exercises and the consultations have minutes. It shows that I oppose the resuming of the remaining of our village. Eighty percent of the land will be for public housing development and most of them will be in our village, within our boundary. I don't agree with them. The situation is even more serious than Tsuen Shui Wei. How will these people, these grassroots, pay for the transportation cost? So many grassroots will live there. How will you address their daily needs? I think we're talking about one million.
I think we're talking about one million or two million square foot of land for these people. How will you take care of their needs? Recently, I read from the newspaper that there are so many oppositions. And amongst these voices, they cover subdivided flats. And these people who claim to be representatives of villagers. Now, these people are famous for operating subdivided flats. They earn over one million per year. Some of them are civil servants. These people claim to be victims. And I already wrote to you reflecting these points. As at present, you have not taken any law enforcement actions. So what's your explanation? For compensation, six hundred thousand for each household. I already made it clear what I think. You say the amount can be split amongst three people. What if a, there are over twenty households living in a squatter? How would the money be split? Will you still give money to these people if we're talking about subdivided flats? With, say for example, if there are twenty households and under the same roof, will the compensation be offered to each of these households? Each gets six hundred thousand? I have to repeat, these people who claim to be victims, who protest in front of the gov- uh, central government officers, these people are really the landlords of subdivided flats. Next, Mister Fu Ka Ho. We, the N E N T attract so much public attention last summer. How come it's only at that time that it attracted so much public attention? We already said that because of the location, because of the time, we have more inter- we have more liaison with the mainland. But have we been able to make our voices heard in this regard? In the development project, the Hong Kong government and the consult consultancy company, they just forced their way through. How much public views have been taken into account? Not many people oppose to integration between mainland and government, and Hong Kong. But at present, only a small amount of people can gain. And the core values of Hong Kong will be ruined. How can such a plan bring forward benefits to Hong Kong? Paul Chen said many times that N E N T is not for integration between Hong Kong and mainland. And he said the project is to build new towns for Hong Kong. But according to the Information Digest, it says that we should optimize on the business opportunities between Hong Kong and mainland. Ping Che, Ta Koo Lan, they are taken out of the project. There should have been special industries there. And twenty hectare in Ku Tong North will be for R N D development. However, does it mean that you put something that should have been in Ping Che to Ku Tong? The government keeps saying that there will be more job opportunities and you will not repeat the mistake in Tien Sui Wei. But look at Tong Tong. Only thirty percent of local residents can stay and work and can work in the, in Tong Tong, in Lantao or the airport. And can you undertake that the local residents in the new, new towns will be able to work within the district? And the R N D or the special industry may not bring interest, may not bring benefits to local residents. Now, Secretary, you have told many lies these few days. No matter how many times you repeat the lies, they will not become the truth. This plan is for integration of Hong Kong and mainland, just say so, admit it. Next, Mister and Miss Lau Si Man. Good morning, everyone. According to earlier government paper, in the next thirty years, there will be an increase of one point four million, uh, in terms of population. Because of that, we have to develop new towns to address housing needs of Hong Kong people. Now, in any event, there will be a rise in population. How come you don't reduce land, give, uh, sold to private developers? Why don't you build public housing on these plots and address the housing needs? How come you have to develop N E N T? And in doing so, you know, you have to sacrifice the homes of indigenous villagers. And our farming produce will also decrease. Is it worthwhile for you to launch the project? Is it the case that the government wants to make more money? And it is not sincere in addressing the housing needs of Hong Kong people? And I think we need integration of rural and urban areas. The population density in Hong Kong last year was sixty, uh, six thousand five hundred kilometer square. And Singapore, they have less land than Hong Kong. And the living environment there should be worse than Hong Kong. How come in Singapore, they have integration between urban and rural area? I think Hong Kong, we need that as well. But N E N T project will urbanize our new territories with the project. Our next generations will have fewer chance to understand the village life in N T. And the childhood memories of our next generations will be about shopping in shopping malls. Do you want this for our next generations? Do you want them to grow up in such a situation? All right, thank you. Next, Mister Louis Chang. Several days ago, Frida Hui said that she was followed by the media and that her children while driving a Mercedes was followed. I sympathize with her. But the N E N T project will sacrifice local residents. And the compensation is not responding to the needs of these people. The people affected do not want to be relocated to public housing. They want to keep to farming in the same area. But the package will not enable them to rent another plot of land to farm. Thirty-four hectare of farmland can be, will be allocated for resumption of agriculture, but only five hectare of which is government land. The rest is owned by private developers. And the government will be the image, will be the middleman to match up the farmers and developers. But that's no guarantee that an agreement will be signed. And in the past five years, only seventy-four farmers was helped by A F C D in resuming farmland. And in N E N T, twenty-eight hectare of farmland will be affected. Based on the information said early on, doesn't mean that it takes ten years for the government to help farmers to resume farming. And the secretary's wife is involved in property investment.
They just want to maintain their lifestyles and dignity. But this is a waste of my breath. If I were Mrs. Chan, I would be more concerned about your, uh, you being a Christian. I remember the Ten Commandments, you can't steal, you can't be greedy. But N T Northeast, you are making a lot of money on this. So you would have broken all the Ten Commandments. You also mentioned your wife is not a director of the subdivided unit, uh, holding company. But it has been discovered that she is the major shareholder. The commandments say you should not use the god's name in vain. So please step down if you still have any sense of humility. Mister Jiang Se Kan. I'm a member of the public, Jiang Se Kan. And I'd like to express some views on Northeast New Territories, new development. I'm against the whole plan, it should be withdrawn. Why? Because this plan is a insufficient, this program has insufficient consultation. It had not consulted Hong Kong people on the most important issue. That is, do people want to move into N T Northeast? The biggest reason is just for mainland, uh, integration. It's just rhetoric. You just want to blur the boundary and allow mainland Chinese people to use our facilities. Initially, in the first two rounds of consultation, um, H O S and government housing wasn't mentioned. It was only added in the third round. I'm against Communist China Party destroying Hong Kong through so-called China-Hong Kong integration. Because ultimately, this destroys one country, two systems. It destroys Hong Kong lifestyle. It destroys our opportunities. And the consultation process does not have sufficient statistics for our consideration. It doesn't even have a discussion topic. It didn't ask Hong Kong public whether they want to relocate into Northeast. If you live in Kowloon, if you lived in Kowloon for generations, or if you lived for generations on Hong Kong Island, do you want to be exiled to the Northeast? So, how does C Y think about young people? Why should they be relocated to a remote area? Do we really have a lack of land in the urban area? There's no response to that. So, environmental groups, they refer to the Fandang Golf Club. So we have these low rent areas that are not up for consideration. They don't ask the public whether they want to relocate into Northeast. We have a lot of land like the Fandang Golf Club in the urban area. I'll give you an example, the Jockey Club. If you resume the Happy Valley Racecourse, you would have a big plot of land to build housing. If you are urban resident, do you want to relocate into the Northeast? I'm a retired person. I'm starting to be worried about food safety when I purchase vegetables. If we have, I usually pick local produce. Earlier on, I read in the news that the, uh, piece of news saying the Gudong South, uh, land could be used for agriculture. Uh, I was very happy with that news. Uh, the government was willing to create more space for local farmers. I thought we'd have more, uh, local produce. And then I read the article. It was about the N T Northeast consultation. And then, uh, fifteenth of July, Legco paper reported on N T N Northeast. Uh, and there were some amendments. And so the affected farmers were compensated and given a new farming land. I then looked up the environmental impact assessment and found the Civil Engineering Development Department and Planning Department in twenty oh seven had a report. Said, uh, a report called N T Northeast Development Survey Report, uh, E I A report. Executive summary, one, three, six oh four. I went through it very quickly and I found something very strange. They had, uh, they looked at air quality, noise, cultural heritage and so on, even fisheries. But they didn't look at the impact on agriculture. So I'm very disappointed with this E I A report. So I'd like to urge the government to set up agricultural policy next. Good morning. I'm speaking as a member of the public. I support development, but I do not support this project. Because such a large scale project, we don't see where there was a review of old new town developments. So when, if we don't look at history and understand our mistakes from the public's perspective, if we don't understand past urban development mistakes and copy the old model verbatim into, uh, uh, the rural area, this is a big, a grave mistake. So the Secretary for Development should review the N T Northeast development. What are we trying to build? So we don't have a long-term vision for population policy. I hope the Secretary for Development conduct a more important role in population policy. And regarding the Environmental Department being absent, I'm very disappointed. Aside from the golf club, the N Northeast has a large tract of land, the landfill, the Dagou Land, landfill. The Northeast residents have asked for the landfill to be shut down for many years. But the government doesn't have a stance on how this land can be rehabilitated. For example, if we were to resume the golf club, could the golf club, could the landfill be a substitute for the golf club? Such that the government can resume the golf cla- the golf club? Uh, so we could, the, we do have Hong Kong residents who are willing to relocate to the Northeast. Do they have an opportunity to speak? What are their aspirations? They might want some agricultural resources. And the Environmental Department, will it invest? Miss Chan Kai. In the N T Northeast, I have the following views and questions. Uh, because I'd like to look at how food safety affects the Hong Kong public. According to the Agricultural Fisheries Department, local produce only makes up two point three percent. So if you purchase hundred So if you purchase hundred. Pieces of vegetables, you'll only get two that are locally produced. We won't have a local food supply. Why are these two vegetables so important to Hong Kong? The jurisdictions across the world have food security policies, for example, in Shanghai. Their self-sustained ratio is fifty percent, Hong Kong doesn't have a self-sustaining. Food policy, that's why we have polluted vegetables for polluted produce, it's because we rely too much on imports. We have no way of checking how the other ninety-eight percent of produce is. Produced. The second point, if we destroy local agriculture. Then our generation won't have local produce. Poultry. Legumes, vegetables are all imported. So this. Will affect our health. So. How can Hong Kong public and the next generation? Why can't they have food choice? And third, import prices fluctuate. From manufacturers to the doorstep, you have to. Also pay for transportation and intermediaries. I'm not calling for a ban on imports, but I want to point out that. Hong Kong people should have a choice in food. If I only have two percent choice, I'd be very disappointed. Fourth. Even though Hong Kong is called the intellectual economy, but we have a lack in agricultural knowledge. There's no history, agricultural history taught. And Hong Kong people. Are unfamiliar with. A lot of. Cultural. Knowledge, so I would like Hong Kong people, you and your next generation. We need to object to the NT Northeast project. The destruction of agricultural land is not just the problem of one generation, next. Miss Chan Kai, speaking on behalf of my home in a Farming City Association.
I'm speaking of Mister Zheng Gakui. I love my home in a Farming City Association. When society or community. Needs to. Use the slogan, I love my home, this indicates two problems. First, I don't love it enough. I need to emphasize I and I need to. Remind people that I love my home, second. I love my normal home, but then somebody tells you that you can't love it. So to prevent people from destroying this establishment, I need to. Emphasize the slogan. People want you to, people encourage you to use the slogan and then. You will be labeled politically incorrect if you don't use the slogan. A person. Who loves his home is something very normal. And. Why do you want to destroy my home? This becomes an ethical question. So you are just told to shut up because it's too sensitive. I love my home in a Farming City Association, it refers to the second point I mentioned. I'm referring to rural home, so people who want to destroy your home say that it's because of society's needs. We need to develop. But all along. Hong Kong is now a service industry, we. Forget. A lot of our past is related to agriculture, for example, we have. Agriculture, growing of rice in the new territories. So the rural areas have not been alienated from the urban areas, it has always been part of the urban area. So we now have a homogenous society that is very short-sighted. I need to refer to the Tao Te Ching. When the Tao is forgotten, we talk about. Filial piety, when we talk about corrupt officials, then people will remember the good officials. So I am speaking of Mr. Zheng Gakui, and I'm also very, okay, time's up, next. Mister Liang Jun Yan. As a northern district resident. I have some views to present, first of all, I'd like to point out that the government paper, the Northeast planning. They had not reviewed the new town experience. So in item one and seven, where the government emphasizes that. They will develop the NT Northeast based on past experience, this is very dangerous. In our last ten years' experience in Tsinghua, Dongchung, Maung San. It's very easy to fail. For example, in Tsinghua. There's Tsinghua, north and south. Because of government. Private collusion. They needed to respond to. Public outcry, they had to build a lot of government housing. So we have a very monotonous development, there, there's nothing else there. There aren't even any hospitals, so. If three hundred thousand people face a problem that there's insufficient social facilities, there's no job opportunities. And when you want to build industry, there's no land. Just now, a lot of speakers. Refer to their concern that there are no job opportunities in new towns, I agree with that.
When you're developing sites, you would usually commit a mistake. In our past experience of developing new towns, employment has always been a problem. And this is also the biggest problem. Well, I give you a house to live in, but then you don't have a job, and that creates a problem of working poverty. And this is very problematic. So in the revised proposal, I think you should first conduct a review on your. Experience in developing new towns in the past, you should consider a fresh. The factors like the quality of life to be provided or afforded to these new residents in these new. Districts, you don't know how to plan, your paper is silent on the issues that are mentioned. So what can we do next? Well, please give up the massive, large development scale or model. And then. You should make, consider the barracks, the Fanning Golf Club. Or other community facilities which have been idle for a long time. So, sorry, time's up, sorry, time's up. So we've got three minutes for each person only, Miss Estelle Lam, next.
I'm a young person. And I hope that the government can take heed of our public opinion and not blindly develop land. And be, and consider the option of using the Fanning Golf course as a substitute. Hong Kong is lacking in land, or we need to increase land supply to address housing problem. This is a statement or rational put forward by the government all along for developing new towns. I think they oversee and flag the issues here. Before we accept this as a reason, let me ask you three questions, first. Do we still, do we really lack land in Hong Kong? Second, where does the increased population come from? Third. Increasing land supply doesn't mean that people can purchase their homes more easily first. It is not the fact that Hong Kong lacks land, it's just that we are not fully utilizing our land. According to the lands department, the developed area takes up twenty-four percent of Hong Kong overland. Six point eight percent for residential development. And twenty percent of the seventy hectares of land is used for developing public housing. So in Hong Kong, idle land amounts to four thousand hectares in Hong Kong. If we can fully utilize these plots, we can. We can build two point four times of the housing units planned for the N E N T. Some people mentioned that we have idle land and we have existing facilities like barracks, so why can't we put better use to these facilities? Instead of wiping out people's homes? Second, the government has mistakenly projected the population growth in Hong Kong in the last two exercises. The government has used the highest quota of the one-way permit for population projection. And have not taken into the factor of zero quota for mainland women's delivery, so the projections for population have been wrong. Now, we have a total of two, two point three million households in Hong Kong. And we have two point five million flats in Hong Kong. So it seems that everybody should be housed. It seems that the problem lies in uneven distribution of households. People can't afford a private housing, but then there is a long queue for public housing. So these are the sorts of mistakes in the policy. And we are now blindly developing new sites in the new territories. I think the NT has been saturated in terms of population. If we put more population, then the condition, the environment will become more cramped even. I don't think development goes, well, I don't think agriculture goes against conservation. Conservation, I think we should go by the principles of nature in farming. But if we are going to repopulate several thousand people there, then that would be very problematic. From Labour Party, Mu Shik Chi. We welcome the government building more housing, but we object to the N E N T project. The reasons is this. The, the aim of the project is really to wipe out villages. The government likes, say, overall population policy, the population projections in the past have all been wrong. And the properties have become commodities for speculation. And even the secretary himself has hoarded land, engaged in renting subdued divided units. And how can we, as members of the public, trust that the government is sincere in improving the housing problem? Or housing situation in Hong Kong? The Labour Department hopes that the government can give up the plan. In N E N T and consider. Including in the plan, the C E Villa and the Fanning Golf Club. Some people said that the golfing is a sport for the middle class. But I don't think that is the case, because middle class can't afford a membership worth millions of dollars. I think it's only the rich, not, less than one percent of people are members of that club. So if we are going to retain the golf club. It means that the one percent of the rich are exploiting the interest or the ninety-nine percent of the population in Hong Kong. We're not hostile to the rich, but it's just that we are disassociated with the present wealth gap. And it takes, the golf clubs is an area of a hundred and seventy hectares. And it pays one thousand dollars to the government as rent. And it is serving such a small group of the rich. And it seems that the rich is getting richer and the poor is getting poorer in Hong Kong. So I hope that the administration can. Include the C E's Villa and the Golf Course. As part of the N E development plan, and then the N E N T people can retain their homes in the area. And if the government insists on its own way and sacrifice, have the people's interests been sacrificed? The Labour Party is going to be very against you. Mister Yan Brownlee.
Mr. Chairman, members, I've made a written submission and I would just like to make a few points in support. I've made this submission because I was one of the town planners originally involved in planning Tsinghua. I can see some of the problems from Tsinghua are being repeated here. And two of the main problems are that there's insufficient private housing, which will lead to a social imbalance. And the second point is that public housing is too concentrated in sites which are too large and not integrated well with the overall new town. And that makes the first problem even more worse. The areas that need to be replanned with more private housing in Fanning North and in Kuten Tong North. I've indicated on a plan which I think has been tabled to you. I'd like to raise three points from our submission in nineteenth of July. The first is from point two. We need to take a long-term view, as we're not just addressing today's problems, but this new town will be there forever. We need a rational approach to planning the urban environment rather than overreacting to short-term issues. The land supply will be less in the future and it is essential to optimize what is proposed within the N D A today. Points three and four of my submission, the plan is proposing this imbalance of sixty percent public housing and only forty percent private housing. And I'm not suggesting reduced public housing. We need to remember that private aspirations for homeownership are very important. And concern over high property prices makes this unachievable. If not enough land is provided for private housing, then these issues cannot be addressed. Social and economic problems will arise from this planning decision. The property market is an important part of the economy. Public housing is not part of that market and therefore, providing that deprives Hong Kong people from taking part in the market. Private housing creates assets for household. Public housing only creates a long-term public liability in terms of managing and maintenance, and itself creates social issues. We therefore need more private units. The original proportion was forty percent public and sixty percent private, and I think that is probably about right. But we should never go above fifty percent mixing in terms of private, public housing. So the important thing regarding this plan is to address the imbalance by providing more private flats. And point five, I've made the point that the residential densities proposed in this are very low. They're lower than the planning standards and requirements, and there's no real reason for this, it's just a decision that can't be justified. And as legislators, you should demand better use of the land of the infrastructure that's going to be provided. If all the housing sites that have a plot ratio of five or below are increased to five. We could increase the private flats by fifty percent, we could add another twelve thousand additional units and accommodate thirty-five thousand additional people. That's an easy, significant increase, and I suggest it can't be ignored. Sorry, time's up.
Next, Miss Wong Hoi Ting. On the N E N T plan, the government has made revisions lately, but then this is going to be a plan to destroy people's homes and. Destroy farmland and it should be withdrawn for the following reasons. First, I question the aim behind the plan. Is it business-government pollution or addressing long-term housing needs? Second, the government puts forward the reason to tie it with the population growth. Can it, then that be achieved under the current proposal? Is it the case that we don't have any land and we have no alternative but to wipe out the villages? The lands, director of lands told us that we should not use the term business-government collusion, but then Carrie Lam. Last year said that the C N T approach should be used because at that time, when people think about PPP, then it's business-government collusion. Now, under the proposal, it's PPP again, so the government has a lot of explanation to do now. If the developers have to develop a private housing, then they have to make applications with the Town Planning Board, but that approval. May not be approved, and so under the current proposal. The property developers can pay a premium and then build housing and they can sell them at great profit. So that will encourage property developers to acquire land and force people, villagers out of their homes. Is this the only option available? According to the Planning Department's estimates. There are some three hundred and ninety hectares of land that can be used for residential purpose, and there are large plots of idle land in the urban areas. Why can't we use these plots?
Why can't we use these plots, existing plots, and choose to destroy people's way of living in NT? While the development and conservation are not necessarily opposite to each other and we can have diversified forms of living. The government has proposed that agricultural rehabilitation be provided, but I don't think this is feasible because this can't be done overnight. And you can't just hit somebody and then pay for his medication, then that's ridiculous. I think the government should make better use of land before it turns or takes the land away from the NENT villages. I think the government should address the demands of NT residents' demands and the government should take good care of its people. Mr. Lee Chi Wang next.
Good morning, Secretary, Chairman. I thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to speak. I support the project. I think it should be taken forward soonest. Last time when I was here, I set that public-private ratio is six to four. I thank the government for accommodating my request. And in the Long-Term Housing Strategy Steering Committee's recommendation is also six to four. Now, we can, there is room for further maneuver within that ratio to... Within the sixty percent, the government can still have room to decide which is XOS, which is PRH. Now, the population has grown in the past decade. The government has developed many satellite cities, including Chin Wan, Chin Mun, Yuen Long. In the east, there are Sha Tin, Fanning, and Shang Shui and Tai Po. If we are going to develop NT NE and it's going to be a success, then we will cover the whole of NT and if they are connected by the railway networks, then that would even be better. So last time when I was here, I urged that the northern link be built as soon as possible so that people can travel quickly to the urban areas from that part of the NT. We now have some one hundred and sixty thousand people living in subdivided units and we've got two hundred thousand applicants on the waiting list for PRH. So there is pressing need for housing. We should adopt a multi-brong approach, developing NT NE, urban renewal and reclamation. All these have to be taken forward in tandem. So I hope that we can increase land supply and housing and to provide housing for our young people. I have several suggestions. What will attract me to move into a new town? Three aspects. First is transport. As I said, railways are indispensable. Second, community facilities, comprehensive community facilities will attract me to move into a new town, including open space, hospitals and so on and so forth. If there are good planning for community facilities, then I would consider moving into a new town. Third, job opportunities. If I can secure a job in that new town, then I'll be willing to move in. I can live there peacefully and work happily, then that will entice me to move in. Now, for the NT, I think we have an opportunity. As far as farming is concerned, we can encourage organic farming and so on and so forth. I think time's up, next. Dr. Peter Cookson Smith.
Thank you. We have overall and specific points. It is necessary to reiterate that Hong Kong is clearly in need of additional housing and therefore land supply. And well-coordinated new development areas are obviously the best way to achieve this. But at present, it's been stated that this need amounts to some four hundred and fifty thousand units. This is a colossal number that will inevitably have a significant impact on Hong Kong's environment and this therefore needs to be fully justified. It's vitally important that we do not put the horse before the cart and that new population scenarios relate to Hong Kong's projected economic needs and development capacity commensurate with all the difficulties and the investment involved. In other words, we need a planning and development strategy with properly considered scenarios. While the basic principles and directions of our strategy at the moment, Hong Kong 2030, are still broadly valid. It's been six years since its completion in two thousand and seven and several interrelated aspects now need to be addressed in order to provide a strategic context for major new development areas. These are, in broad outline, we've set them out in the paper, an outline strategy not merely in the light of imminent demands but in terms of environmental planning, landscape, ecological protection, active farmland and recreation. Also the potential to rationalize the current ad hoc pattern of development and land use in the NT to achieve more coherent and ordered planning. An employment generation commensurate with the potential for new and viable industries, which should in itself be subject to detailed economic study, including development trends and interfaces with the PRD. And finally, a betterment agenda that relates to the quality of overall environment and reflects the sustainable component of Hong Kong 2030. The specific points, notwithstanding the overall points set out, our response to the proposed development is as follows. The integration of robust economic and employment clusters is supported. However, the background analysis and actual potential for this needs to be spelled out in more detail. The projection of thirty-eight thousand new jobs is very speculative and highly dependent on many external factors. We think the proposals to provide assistance to affected farmers and facilitate agricultural rehabilitation should be strongly supported. In terms of the revised ODP and key changes, it's noted that the public-to-private housing ratio has been adjusted to sixty-forty. We also think that fifty-fifty is better. From the master layout plans that we can see in the report, the vast majority of public housing seems to be in the form of trident blocks, twenty-four units of floor, a very old housing rental type, very basic form of public rental housing, but in extremely high population density. I think this needs further substantiation and justification. The resumption of private land in ex-gretia compensation packages are likely to be contentious and will require a lot of time and negotiation. A land tribunal should be set up to ensure fairness on all sides. Thank you.
If you have brought along with you speaking notes, please write your name on your speaking notes. And before you leave the chamber room, you can hand it over to our staff so that we can clearly understand your views through your written submission. We still have twelve minutes left before the end of this session. Any members wishing to speak? Mr. Albert Chan, Ms. Emily Lau, Mr. Ronny Tong, Dr. Fernando Cheng, anybody else? Members, questions and comments? Two minutes each. The first one is Mr. Albert Chan, Chairman. I have a question for the deputations. I thank them for coming despite the very bad weather. The secretary is pocketing a lot of profits nineteen times of the original purchase price. And the secretary claimed that he is doing everything for public good for our next generation. I think he's just doing everything for his son and his next generation only. Now, if the secretary stays in his job shamelessly, would you be very infuriated? Can somebody from the deputations answer my question? Mr. Tam Kwok Chan. Well, two minutes, well, please be quick. Secretary, while Speaker not coming through, Speaker not coming through. Sorry, Speaker not coming through. I think it's difficult for the administration to function normally if the secretary stays in his position. Mr. Leng Chen Yin, Secretary.
Secretary, it's just meaningless for you to explain all these companies' relationships to us. The crux of the matter is the declaration to Exco. You reported to CYLUN that you had conflict of interest and you had land there. But when did you know about the conflict of interest? When did you know about this matter? This is the crux of the matter. Next, the madam over there. Your integrity goes bankrupt, so you shouldn't implement NENT project. You yourself shouldn't do that, you and CYLUN should step down. Next, Emily Lau. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, deputations, for coming here. We started the meeting at nine and we have a whole day meeting and there are meetings set for next week too. The secretary's and his family's matter are standing in the way of the government policy. He should not stay. He should help himself and the government in stepping down. Earlier on, a paper was submitted on land interest, or no, in fact, on the land held by the administration. In fact, lots of deputations have said that the houses, villages, should not be demolished. I understand in North District and Yuen Long, there is some two hundred and fifty-seven hectare of land. That's in paragraph twenty-two of the paper. Kootong South, Shang Shui, Area Thirty-Three, etc., etc., are now under consideration. Now, you have these plots, you should make use of these plots instead of demolishing people's homes. Can you think about that? I'll defer to colleagues from the Lands D. We are considering certain plots. Yuen Long South, we already started first phase of the public consultation on how to make use of the two hundred and fifty-seven hectare of land. We've already completed phase one of the consultation. Kootong South, we are more or less in the same stage. Area Thirty, we see whether we can minimize the impact on the sewage treatment plant. So we are resorting to different means to identify land for development. Ronny Tong, we spent lots of time on discussing the secretary's integrity, but the secretary has not told us concerning NENT. There is this elderly home where over a thousand elderly people are living, where there are twenty-eight blocks of low-density development and there is a garden there. It's quite a pleasant environment. So will there be measures so that the elderly home can continue to operate? I visited the elderly home you mentioned. The SWD will offer assistance to the elders living in the elderly home to move to an other elderly home. These are elderly homes operated by private operators and after the NENT is completed, there will be elderly homes in the, within the boundary and there will be services for elderly people there. From the perspective of land planning and land use, the use of, the land use is not exactly satisfactory, the land use of the area. I don't quite understand you, Secretary. Do you mean that not maintaining the lifestyle of the elderly people? It's right, I, you've been there, you've been there. Do you know the living environment there? We're talking, have you been there, Secretary? Yes, yes, so you know what I'm talking about? You know what I'm talking about, right? Of course. From the perspective of the planning of a new town, from the perspective of urban planning, the land use, the density of that area are not satisfactory. So you mean the elderly people should be crowded into cage flats? Is that what you mean? Is that what you call satisfactory? All right, time's up for you, Dr. Fernando Cheng.
Thank you, Chairman. On elderly homes and the one thousand odd elderly people, we have to take care of them. Moving them to another home, some elderly people may pass away because they can't get used to the new living environment. But I want to ask an other question. Paul Chan, and your family or your wife's family own land and you're suspected of conflict of interest. Thus, on one hand, on the other hand, we're saying that there is lack of land in Hong Kong, there's lack of housing in Hong Kong. Would you have conflict of interest? But still, I want to ask your bureau this. Will you consider imposing tax on vacant land? Now, a piece of land that has been left vacant for nineteen years, the price went up many folds and weeds are growing there. And yet, on the other hand, you are resuming land nearby this plot. So shouldn't we make use of private plots as soon as possible rather than leaving them idle and vacant? Secretary.
Chairman, the Development Bureau concerning that has not had such consideration. Dr. Cheng's suggestion can be considered and his suggestion relates to other policy bureaus too. All right, any other members wish to ask questions? If not, I'll see if the administration would like to make any response. Maybe the secretary, you can give us a reply. Yes, I'll be brief, Secretary. I'd like to thank the panel for holding this meeting for us to meet with the deputations. And I also like to thank deputations individuals for coming here to put forward your views on NENT NDA project. We lack housing and land in Hong Kong. NENT project is a project to address medium housing need in the medium run. Many deputations ask whether we have lots of idle land in Hong Kong for development. The answer is no. Last year, when we replied to questions in Largco, the three hundred and ninety-one hectare of idle private land for residential development have already been made public. The information has been uploaded to the internet, but most of the land is too narrow. Say, for example, there in the back alleys, they can't be developed. Lands that can be developed, we will consider developing such land. If you identify any land that can be developed, please let us know. We will be humble in considering your suggestion. Chairman, Chairman, speakers of mic, Mr. Leng, Mr. Leng, without the chairman's permission, you should not make any noise to disrupt our meeting. Please observe the rules of the meeting. Speakers of mic, please leave. Order. Please keep quiet so we can continue with the meeting. Chairman, developable land, potential land. Now, we're not talking about identifying a piece of land and build flats there. It's not that simple. In Hong Shui Kiu, we have two hundred hectare of developable land, but most of these are plots for open storage. The land use is not satisfactory. But still, we have to concentrate the land, to gather the land, to address our needs. Water supply, sewage, transportation, we need planning for all these. And the time these takes will be comparable to the time of developing a new town. And we can't rush things.
And we can't rush things. Our colleagues try to minimize the number of people affected in the N D A project. Inevitably, still, one thousand households will be affected. Our colleagues will take the initiative to approach these people, to explain the compensation package to them, and will also make proper use of public money to help these people. Population projection. In the past ten years, the growth is lower than the past, but still, we see an increase in population, and every ten years, we have an increase of about four hundred and fifty thousand people. The population is more or less that to be included in our new town. We have already got assessment on transportation concerning improvement on roads and railways. Farming. I would like to tell members that we will work closely with the Food and Health Bureau in identifying land for resumption of farming. Now, in matching the farmers with the landowners may not be able to fully address their needs. Now, for so we're monitor the situation, the new job opportunities, thirty-seven thousand, that may be fewer than other new towns. Now, eighty percent of the population, however, will be living close to the station and the major trans P T I that will be they will be living within five hundred meters of these facilities, and they will be living close to Lok Ma Chau Lu. And Hong Shui Kiu will provide over a hundred thousand new job opportunities. And it's easy for these population to go to other district to work. For C E Lodge and Fanling Golf Course, they have been included in the N N T development project. We will review the use of them there. But the review is a large-scale project. If we are to include them in the development, we still have to work on the E I A report and other areas. That will take several years. So these suggestions cannot replace N E N T project, all right? We'll take a break. We'll resume at eleven thirty at twenty. Thank you.